Brad Mert.
Here.
Rob Sessomino.
Here.
Joe Hayes.
Here.
Tick Bryan.
Here.
Kathy Warman.
Here.
All present.
Right now, we have communications and citizens. If anyone would like to address the council, you're more than welcome. We'd be glad to hear from you.
I'm Mike McCluskey, and I'm the chairman of the planning commission, and I want to speak very briefly about item number eight on your agenda, which is the update of the zoning ordinance. And let me say at the outset, I fully understand you need more time. It's very important for us, to us, that you understand what this is all about. And we're very anxious and ready to work with you to better understand what is included in that. Just to give you a little bit of an update, our zoning ordinance was last updated in 1968. You, the city, hired a consultant in 2007 to work on revisions. Nothing had really happened with all of that work until earlier this year, when we started attempting to clean that up. Our approach was very straightforward, in that we simply wanted to clean up the words. We were not proposing changes in that, and our approach included a bucket list that has forty-five items on it. In some of our discussions with you, you have come to understand how complex these items are. Nothing is very clear. Somebody might think, oh, this is simple to change, and somebody says, well, what about this? Have you thought about this, that, or the other? So therefore, our approach was to identify that bucket list, and then we wanted to come to you and ask you to set priorities in the way that we worked off the items on this bucket list. Just to give you a little bit of information about our approach as we worked on this, we've met weekly, I think, since March, or April, in working on these items. We've had a lot of public meetings. You've had a working session. We've worked with developers. We've had individual meetings with a number of you. So we've really attempted to provide as much education as we could in this, but again, we fully understand that you may need more time, and we're just fine with that. We want your support. We want to update our zoning code so that it's something that we can be proud of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all y'alls help. It's been a long year with a lot of meetings to this point, and, you know, we're one reading, and we're one reading away, and we appreciate it. It's gonna make a change, and I think it will help attract developers and other people to our community with these changes. So, thank you once again. Anyone else?
My name's Derek Dodson. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. McCluskey and the folks that helped him with that. Put a lot of work in that. I appreciate it. I grew up, spent a lot of time hanging out in town squares as a kid, the old courthouse, the old sheriff's office, police station, and the fire department. Something I pay attention to. I've spent over the last seven years in effort to try to make sure that density was minimized to a reasonable extent in the north side of town, because the north side of town is the only quadrant in the city that has to traverse through the town square as traffic flows to Walmart and I-40. I have a question with regard to reconstruction of the town square that I'd like to ask you, Mr. Lanning. Jeff may be, Baines may be the appropriate one. I'm not sure. But back on May the twentieth, there was an ordinance forty-six thirty-five, and it says zoning ordinance to exempt B-two district, central business district, from onsite drainage detention. And then on seven-one, Paul Corrider, city planner, said in the council meeting, it doesn't really lend itself, the town square, to onsite drainage of rainwater. So when the town square is, construction's finished, will the drainage be the same as it is now? Will drainage be added, taken away? What's the score there?
Actually, if you look at the maps of what's proposed when the finished product is done, there is actually more green space on the square than there is today. The islands that are proposed with the landscaping, there's actually an increase in green space, which would mean a decrease in runoff in the square area.
But with regard to the drainage compartments that now drain water out from the square that are in, you know, different places, are those going to be maintained? Are they going to be erased? Are there going to be drainage added?
There are, as far as the number of catch basins and things like that. That's what you're asking. Okay. We are, that was an extensive, there was an extensive amount of design done there to ensure that the water can get away with the new design, and there were some catch basins added. A lot of the catch basins were recharged, and where we're, especially at the throats where you're coming into the big part of the square, those, there are catch basins at all four quadrants right there that are being relocated and revamped to catch the water in the new design.
Additionally, and this is in regard to T-Dot's plans to do the quadrants when they get to that part, when they're gonna, the construction of the different quadrants, the plan is to go from the southwest quadrant counterclockwise, which means the next quadrant would be where the chamber is, and then around. That fails to make sense for these reasons. There has been drainage taken away from the quadrant which Crystal Crotur was in. There's been drainage taken away. Basically, there's only one catch basin now at the corner of two thirty-one north. That's also that, and the northwest side are the two low sides in the square already. If there's any flooding between now and when they get through, as they raise the other side of the square doing the reconstruction, and without the drainage, it would seem that the improvements would be made first to the north, to the quadrant to Crystal Crotur. So that would seem like that would be the logical place to start, because there in the most danger of being flooded. The one on the other side, it's the low side over the cave. There's plenty of drainage over there. So, it fails to make sense while that's being started in that rotation.
It's a state project, and the state plan's kind of dictated that. We had some input into that. Nothing, there shouldn't be any drainage compromised for the construction. It should be open, I mean, it should remain open during construction. So, I really think, I don't think that's an issue that would be a problem.
Okay. Shifting gears, Mayor Craighead. Last week, you said in the media that with regard to the train bringing people in for Black Friday, that you were fulfilling your pledge of commitment to try to help the merchants stir up business over the holidays. I don't think anybody take an issue with that. But it defies logic to believe that people are going to come to town and spend six hours at, for example, the outlets mall, and be stuck there. And as the train schedule said, thirty-minute trip from just Mount Jewett to Lebanon. In the newspaper, you're quoted as saying, "The increase in local business is what we were hoping for." You also said, this is in the Lebanon Democrat, you also said that people took advantage of the train and chauffeur service. That's technically true. It's just something that was great, they said. Well, for those who don't know, thirty-two people rode two trains into Lebanon. Five people got off and didn't go shopping. And twenty-seven total got off to maybe do some shopping. Possibly half of those were children. So it's another one of your disingenuous spins in the newspaper here with regard to what transpired on Black Friday, which reminds me of one of my favorite quotes of you in the Lebanon Democrats that you've been mayor, which was when this city council, back on December the third, voted to defer your arena project to the next agenda. You had a cow and did everything you could to prevent it, yet you were in the paper where you said, and I quoted, "I felt it was best to pull back." Would it be fair to say, that reminds me, if you're trying to sell your arena with people riding the train from Nashville, come to minor, double minor league hockey games here, would it be fair to say that the sales tax referendum, you hope to use proceeds from that sales tax referendum to help finance Legends Drive and thereby facilitate the entertainment district? Will that be fair to say?
Go and finish all your comments.
That's a question. I'll wait and answer.
Go and make your comments.
That's my question. I'll wait and answer.
Finish your comments.
I'm awaiting your answer. Is it a yes or a no? If I were you, I'd answer yes.
I'm just waiting for you to finish, and then I'll comment on a lot of what you just said.
Well, I'll finish then by saying this. On January the tenth, you said indeed, in a public meeting, you said indeed, you hope to use the proceeds from the sales tax referendum to use for Legends Drive, which is logical. Your entire term of office has been defined by the pursuit of extending Legends Drive. On March the eighteenth, council meeting on the agenda, resolution eighteen-ten, to designate any increased revenue from a sales tax increase to the building of roads and infrastructure. That's Legends Drive. Also, on the same agenda, it says, resolution eighteen-twelve, to promote and assist Legends Drive extension and the Beckwood Connector streets and associated infrastructure. It makes no sense that you wouldn't try to use proceeds from a sales tax referendum for the very expensive, probably north of six-point-five million dollars, extension of Legends Drive. It makes no sense. Yet, you failed to advertise that when the sales tax referendum was underway. Personally, I think you hid that from the public, and I also think that was dishonest. Now, you gotta remember one thing. When you reply to what I say, if you come up with some more disingenuous spin, like you did in the newspaper on Saturday with regards to the people coming off the train, which three people independently counted, and as I understand it, it was also filmed, when you do that, I'll march right back up here to this microphone at the next council meeting and take your scalp. Thank you. Would you like for me to stop?
You're welcome, Sid. You can sit down. Appreciate your comments. I'm so glad that you're such a great supporter of what we're trying to do here. Sit down.
What I do not support is dishonesty in government. That's what I don't support.
Sit down. Thank you. First of all, I will say, you know, you're a little short-sighted on the object of the train fare this Friday. RTA advertised all over Nashville about letting, RTA advertise about riding the train for the Lebanon people to go to Nashville and people to come up here. We didn't have a lot to come up here, but we gave her a try. But you had a lot of advertising in Nashville, through papers, TV media, talking about Lebanon, talking about our square, our changes, talking about the outlet mall in DeKalb. We had an event there with Capitol Theater. We had about five-hundred-and-eighty-four people. You forget to talk about that. That means five-hundred-and-eighty-four people that our commitment to push and promote for the square got that many more people in addition to the train riders. I think it was successful. Could've been a lot more, but we gave her a try. But the biggest thing is, the advertising in the middle Tennessee area for what we have to offer here, that word got out. So... Anyone else like to address? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Dunn. I live on Blair Mountain Drive. I just got a couple of questions. One is, has the debate been resolved on this retirement issue?
We have a lot of future talk and discussions about the retirement issues coming forward.
Well, the newspaper article doesn't do much to make it clear to anybody what's going on. I'll just say that. I don't know why. They must've had it all mixed up, but I would like to ask a couple of questions. Do we have, do we have two plans on vision, blue cross, and senior?
You have a, all right, well, go and finish all your questions.
Okay. Well, the newspaper says we've got two plans. They're covered in a blue cross. Then it mentioned that they're covered under senior, which we're trying to eliminate for the retirees.
You got it all wrong. You got it all wrong.
I got it wrong?
Yes.
You haven't read it?
Well...
And this is why I'm asking, because it says that we're gonna save thirty-three thousand dollars by eliminating vision and a travel plan for retirees and their spouses. But it also says they cover it under blue cross, blue shoe, put the same thing. Now, I know personally from, in matter of healthcare plan, both plans are not gonna pay for the same thing.
Okay. What it is, is that in the discussion was a supplement plan for those that are retirees that are sixty-five and, you know, they're already on Medicaid program.
Oh, no. I'm ahead of here.
All right. What we have for our employees is basically a copay of ten dollars, ten, twenty-five, thirty, something like that. All right? And we have the vision. That vision policy is also covering, was also covering the supplement group, those forty-six people. So we were duplicating that insurance. That's why we took that out. We took out the travel part. If you go out of the country, because most people buy a policy to cover it whenever they go, or it's kind of included in what they do, from what I understand, and what's, we've done it for our family. The other thing is, we were looking at lowering the, increasing the copay of that group from five dollars to ten dollars, which is what our present employees and the retirees that are on the Blue Cross program are at. So that's all that happened.
Well, that makes a lot of better sense.
Yeah. And what it was, let me add this. The original cost last year was about sixty-one or two-thousand dollars. The increase went up fifty-three percent to about ninety-three thousand for that group. And if we had reduced the copay, the vision, and the travel, it would've saved a total of about sixteen thousand. We still had an increase that the city absorbed for those retirees of about, if we had reduced those, we still would've had about sixteen thousand increase that we absorbed.
Well, I just wanna say, I read both of these articles, which are pretty much the same, but it said the increase was thirty percent. And I said, well, thirty percent from sixty to ninety-three is not accurate.
It increased fifty-two and a half roughly to a total of ninety-three thousand.
Would that be related to the amount of uses that they had on the...
No, I don't know if it's as much of the uses or just the changing climate that we're in with the healthcare issue.
Are you telling the reason for the break?
Yes.
It's my understanding the reason for the sharp premium increase had to do with the reduction of federal reimbursements under the Affordable Care Act.
So we're not taking them? I mean, Tennessee not taking that money?
That's not, that deals with Medicaid, I believe, instead of Medicare.
Okay. All right. I understand that a little bit better, but I read both of these articles, and it made absolutely no sense when you said they were going up thirty percent from the previous year and they're gonna be ninety-three thousand dollars. More like fifty or sixty percent.
And the bottom part of it is, we let the copay at five, and instead of raising it to the ten, and we did away with that vision policy, which was stipulation, and that travel. So basically, our bill's gonna end up being about ninety-nine-one thousand instead of...
Kind of flunked.
We saved two thousand.
Lost my numbers there.
We saved two thousand dollars.
Yeah. It reduced it by two, but a little change, I suppose.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I read another article, but I didn't bring out one in the world. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Joe, and Nancy, would you join? Joe, come up here. Joe, would you come to the front here? Nancy, we appreciate you sharing with all these years, you know, and I would...
I counted up the meetings, and it was a ridiculous number of meetings he's attended.
Well, and I can tell that, calling the specials and the work sessions and all, but Joe's been a trooper for Lebanon for all these years, and we appreciate him. And I would like to read this proclamation in honor of a great servant, a true servant. Whereas our country endures and prospers because in every generation, men and women answer the call of service to serve their fellow man. Joe Hayes is one such man. Serving Word for Council for over twenty years, Joe Hayes represents the very best of human spirit and has never been afraid to stand tall for the values and freedoms we cherish. The City of Lebanon is honored to call Councilman Joe Hayes a friend in leadership and principle. And whereas serving the City of Lebanon on the Lebanon Planning Commission, Lebanon Airport Commission, Industrial Development Board, Transportation Public Works Committee, Councilman Hayes has been closely involved and responsible in part for much of the growth and development of neighborhoods and businesses in his tenure on the council. And whereas the city has been, has seen tremendous industrial and retail growth during Councilman Hayes' representation on the council, Genesco, Bridgestone, Dale, Lowe's, Home Depot, Lock &amp; Bar, Permobile, Leggerton, Amazon, Starbucks, Mannheim Auto Auction, and more recently, the Baker School of Aeronautics, just to name a few, have located and expanded to our city. Also, we have seen our Lebanon Municipal Airport thrive and expand. Joe has been a big part of that and a big supporter of our airport here, and I've asked him to stay on as a board, on that board, and he's graciously agreed to do that. Whereas Joe and his wife Nancy have been married for forty-seven years, have two daughters and two son-in-laws, Angie and Jay Clark, and Amy and Tommy Presley. They have been blessed with two grandchildren, Sophie Clark and Malie Presley, and two grandsons, AJ Clark and Jeffrey Presley. And whereas Joe Hayes lives his Christian faith, has been a member of the Manuel Baptist Church for fifty years, and as a sports enthusiast, Joe has remained an avid Cumberland University supporter. If there's a game, you'll see Joe there in the stands. Now, therefore, in gratitude of the years of service, guidance, and humility bestowed on our city by a man we simply call Joe, our friend and colleague, I feel correct, head mayor of City of Lebanon, to hereby proclaim Tuesday, December second, two thousand and four, Councilman Joe Hayes dead. Thank you so very much.
Comment.
Thank you, Joe. I know there's probably a lot of other things. I just, Bobby, it's great to see you here. We were really worried here the last few days. We just wanted to let everyone know that we have a lot of big issues coming at us here in the coming weeks, and that's talking about healthcare for our employees and our retirees that aren't on the Medicaid. Also, we have a lot of budget issues that we need to talk about, where the revenues are coming. We also need to be talking, gonna be talking about what we're going to try to accomplish this coming year. And we have a lot of great things that we can accomplish, and encourage this council to be really close together to make those great things for Lebanon too. So, Lanning, I'll pass it on to you.
I'll start with commenting on the zoning bill. I really appreciate y'all understanding some of the time issue, because I started finding out, as I would go back over it, a lot of times I could answer my own questions, but then I'd find another question, so I'd have to go back through and give it. All you have to do is read, and you understand the time and effort that y'all have put into this. And I want to thank you for that. Joe, I appreciate, I appreciate your service. I've known you for a lot of years. I knew you when I was just a kid running around with dad. When he's seeing this on the agenda for tonight, he's been sitting on the edge of his chair for about four hours, because he was coming. So, you know, it's just, I think it's great that we have a city where, you know, as a kid running around with dad, I got to meet people like you, Charles Bale, and I think it's really a compliment to the city of the great people that we've had that helped us get where we are. Rick, we survived it all somehow. We've got some big shoes to fill. Randy?
Yes?
I know we've got the, the one issue over there, and we're working on it, as far as where they messed up some of that, flooding. Have we not got any kind of a stopgap or something to speed? I mean, it's because, I mean, it's because something they haven't done that they were supposed to do, or it's not done right. But if you're one of the ones sitting there getting the water running off, it's an awful slow process.
It's an everyday, it's an every rain, I understand. And we've kind of gotta go through the process to make that happen. We could go fix it ourselves, but really, I think the right process is to keep turning the screws on those that cause trouble, and we will get that fixed.
Well, but I mean, what I'm saying, even looking past this one in the future, is there anything we can do to, you know, it gets bad when they do it, and those neighbors are paying for it.
I understand, and that's a hard question to answer, but every situation's different. And I'd like to tell you, yeah, there's a way we can fix this quicker. It's gonna depend on what happens and when it happens, and all I can tell you is that we will be vigilant in making sure they do what they're supposed to do.
Oh, I know you will. I'm not doubting what y'all are doing. I know it's just, you can only have them other than us going out there. It's a...
About their family.
Okay. That's all I have.
Fred?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to commemorate Joe Hayes. I've worked with him many years in my first term, and I was still in work with him his second term, and he's been an asset to our city, and we will miss him. And also, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and that's all I have.
Again, I'd like to thank Joe for his service. I remember when I was running, first time, he was pretty sick and just come out of the hospital. He was still over there waving a sign. Pretty dedicated, and we thank you for his dedication. I'd like to thank those people that are currently involved in working on the square project. I had a conversation with Souvenant of the Other. I had a conversation with, uh, Souvenette the other day who runs the chamber, and she's also a county commissioner, and, uh, of course, it's not perfect, but the lion's share of feedback that we've gotten from the service interruption while we've been going on over there's been very, very positive. We've had some people that were one hundred percent opposed to the project come around and said they see the vision, and they also appreciate the effort that's being put into the lack of interruption, so I, I really appreciate it. It's certainly not perfect, but for those of you that have seen everything that's going on around there, it's really gone extremely well, given, given what we're doing. Lastly, uh, we spoke about healthcare. As of which right now, we have an eighteen million dollar deficit for our unfunded long-term healthcare requirements. So when we're having discussions about things that, that are, that are difficult, like retiring healthcare, like employee healthcare, like tough decisions, like I said, right, right now, currently based on today, our projection is an eighteen million dollar delta. So when I was behind the half a cent sales tax, everybody remembers, we on the council committed that we would commit fifty percent of that to repair and rehab existing infrastructure. The council did nothing and no ordinance in support of any new infrastructure. The half a cent, fif- fifty percent of that was towards existing repair and rehab of existing infrastructure. And I think that we're gonna have to take a serious look again at the half cent, but we're gonna have to commit fifty percent of that to a sinking fund for healthcare. Currently, ten cents in property tax generates about eight hundred thousand dollars to the general fund. So based on our sales tax projections, the half a cent property tax would have generated four point two million dollars. If we split that in half, that's two point one million for existing projects, roads, things that we have, not what we want to have. And then two point one million put in a sinking fund for this healthcare, that's gonna become a real number for us one day. And in equation to a property tax, that four point two million that we can get through a half a cent sales tax increase, if the only way we're gonna get that money through property tax, that is a fifty-two cent property tax increase. And remember, I understand we can cut, we can, we can manage our, our, our budget, and we can do things more efficiently, and that's always our goal every day, but the city can only generate revenue three ways: sales tax, property tax, and user fees. Those are the only ways that we have the money to do these things, and I don't care how much we cut, we're not gonna find eighteen million dollars. We're not gonna find it. So you, as the citizens, are gonna need to get involved and not just be the agents of no, I'm voting no on this, I'm voting no on that, I don't have an answer, I don't have a recommendation, I don't have a suggestion, I'm just against what you're looking for. There's a lot of intelligent people we have in this community, and we need you to help us participate in the process, because we've got some tough choices that we're gonna have to make, and, and you've gotta, you've gotta participate in the process. I disagree almost every time he speaks, but I appreciate their coming up to the podium and at least participating in the process. And we need more people to do that, and if someone's got a creative way that they can help us find this money, please, please help us, speak up. That's all I have.
Joe? I'd like to thank each employee of the City of Lebanon for what they've done on the time that I've been here. They've got some of the finest workers that you can find anywhere. They're dedicated, if you don't believe it, get out of so rainy day and look at the sanitary workers, the garbage people, but they like to be called sanitary workers, but they're out there no matter what the weather is, rain, shine, snow. Uh, we did let them off last year when it was cold, and I should appreciate them doing that, and those, those boys got hurt. I was gonna be sliding into them or something like that. And I just wanna thank City of Lebanon for what it means to me. 'Cause I'm just a little country boy from the big city of Statesville, Tennessee. And I want to thank Bobby Jewell back there, sticking with me, helping me during this time. And I'm gonna stick with him too with his health problems. I ask prayers for him every Sunday morning in my thunderous good class, and I think it's working. Bobby's been a good friend of mine for many years, we're both young people. We're both like corn dogs. And I spent two years under Mr. Jewell, and, and, you know, he was a good man every day that I went to his office or even saw him out on the street, and I really appreciate what he did for the city. But he got some stuff in here, I remember working with the Apple Small out here, working with, uh, the, the dog food plant, other things that Mr. Jewell got in here, and I really appreciate that. And, and I'd just like to say that the council members that I have served with, that they've been served with, I'd be afraid to say how many there are, but they have some of the finest people too that's, we maybe don't agree with the way they do sometimes, but nobody agrees with the way I do. And again, I, I, my term is up, like, this is my last night, and I just really, really appreciate having the opportunity to serve. And I want to thank my family for sticking with me, 'cause we figured out the other night, that just regular scheduled meetings, I had read at six hundred this council meeting, that's not accounting the, all the other stuff. You know, you put a lot of time into it, and that's hard on your family. You know, you, you've got, you've got daughters, sons, wives, here you are out at night, missing some good family time, but it's been worth it, I've enjoyed it, and I would do it again. Even though I'm going off, my phone number's still the same, it's four four four, forty-six hundred, and I live in Ward Four, and I plan to live there the rest of my life, which I hope is many more years. And I just wanna thank God for what he's done for me during these years, the sickness he brought me through, the two grandsons, the grandsons I got, the granddaughters I got, and the son-in-law. A great family, my mother and father were good old country boys and women, and I'm not ashamed of them a bit, I just hope, wish I could been half what they were. They raised seven kids, and that's when it wasn't nothing. I know my dad worked on the farm, he worked for a dollar a day grabbing bushes out of the venture house. Did get part of a milk check, a backer check, so. I know what it is to be poor, I know what it is to, uh, get amongst the people that's got stuff too. Some of my good friends are poor, some of my good friends are rich, some of my good friends are white, some of the good friends are black, some of my good friends are foreign people. So the way I look at it, look at yourself and just be a shining light forever, citizen. In this great county, we got a Wilson, Lebanon, and the state of Tennessee. And I spent some time in the army, and I really like to respect the soldiers we have now on the foreign fields and here in the United States for what they are doing and what they're standing up for. And it just burns me up when I see these places protesting and tearing up, tearing up other people's property, and they think it's something great. Just wait till the, the day of reckoning comes, they're gonna see what they did wrong. I, I'm not preaching nothing, I do, this is just what I feel on my heart. I try to go to every one of the services they have up here, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and all of those, I enjoy it, I enjoy it. I like to see people, and I like, you know what I like to see better off? Is a tear run down one of those soldiers' ass. That next note where his heart's at. And I'd just like to thank William Porter for what he's did. Me and William have been in church over there several years, and I like to talk about me being in softball with those young girls. You take a young girl, or more one, that don't have a mother or father, one of them missing, you can tell it in those kids. And we gotta be a father or a mother to that kid that haven't got it. So I just wanna thank God for this opportunity that I had to, for to coach these young girls. I ain't gonna have my two daughters, that they didn't like it, but, you know, they, we enjoying it, but. I don't know, I better, I better shut up, but it's time for me to go home now. And again, I just wanna thank each of one of, thanking Mayor for what he did, Mr. Wright, Dick. Jackie, Mr. Sutton, and then old Fred, all of them, Lanny, Jackie down on the end there, she's been a great help to me too, and I, I hate to hear about her father passing away, 'cause, but my heart feels for her. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Dick? I'd like to follow that.
I wanna thank Joe for his service to our town, and we go back a long way, and, uh, I think we all could have used a lesson in humbleness from Joe, he's one of the most humble people I've ever known, and, uh, that's, that's a great quality in a person, and I appreciate that, Joe. That's all.
Mayor, I've got a couple things, first of all, I, I totally echo everything, and Joe, I, I really enjoyed working with you, and, and Joe, we always say, you know, he's a man of few words unless he gets on Cumberland, and there's a couple other things, grass is free, leaves, and then, uh, uh, you know, then his heart just goes off, but I'm gonna tell a tale on you, Joe. Um, we coached Paul, the young men, the little, little kids, and, uh, Joe coached the girls. And, uh, it was really interesting, 'cause Joe was really laid back, very humble, and he just coached, and his heart was all in it, but the girls were losing, what Joe would do is go out there and he would upset the umpire. And he would get the umpire so mad, the umpire would throw him out of the park. Well, what happened was, is the girls got upset because Joe got thrown out of the park, and they ended up winning the game. So it was a strategy, and then one time I thought, Joe, that's just not like you to do that, but, but after I saw this, I thought, he knew exactly what he was doing, but they would rally and they would wait for Joe, so he did an awesome job as a ball coach, as a council member, as a friend, as a colleague, uh, and yeah, Miss Nancy, there are a lot of hours, and Joe probably doubled most of ours. So, I mean, he was here, uh, even when he couldn't be, even when he couldn't be, he came in. So I appreciate everything you did, Joe, and you know what, you're not leaving, you're on there for a commission, uh, you know, you, you, it's, it's hard, it's hard to walk away, it's, it's a labor of love for you, and that's why you're so awesome, Matty. Thank you, appreciate everything you've done and, and your family for, for allowing you and giving him to us. Thank you. Um, a couple things I just wanted to just talk about, just briefly, um, I also too wanna thank Mr. Mack, and, uh, I know, uh, you know, we had some others up here, you know, Jack was up here, uh, Bale, and several others, and I know there's been a handful of everybody, and Paul has kinda tolerated, yes, I've been trying to wade through it. Um, and, and I am gonna ask that we defer, just for, and I actually, we did just until the fifteenth, uh, I think Jeff recommended a little longer, but this is the document that we're going through, and I think Mr. Mack will tell you, we have such undeveloped plan on that end, I'm just really wanting to know what I need to know, um, I feel like I can't really do my job, and I know that Joe really was counting on voting on it, but at the same time, like me and Paul discovered the other day, um, the use on appeals, I couldn't even read it, but just the way the copier did it, you couldn't even read it, so I'm gonna go back yesterday and print the, the format out, and so I could highlight it, et cetera, but I take, um, the zoning pretty serious, because I just know that's part of your continuity and rollout, and, you know, your business development and developer enticement, um, so I am gonna ask that we defer that tonight, you know, and we can talk about when, but I just think we owe it to the citizens and to our committee who worked since March to get this done, countless hours, and to the group that put it together, who worked for two years to put it together. Uh, it is so, uh, foreign to me to look at it in this way, based on our old way, because that's all I know, so I've had to really kinda try to wrap my brain around it, but, and I said, I'm meeting Monday morning with, uh, Paul and anybody else that wants to join us, um, you know, if you get your questions, I'm gonna make mine all out to where we can wade through it a little bit, but, but I do appreciate it, and, and I know we're headed in a good direction, I think we're headed in an awesome direction, but I know your hard work is, is certainly learning life, and, uh, it's, they're very foreign, and you've been on the planet a while, so you, it's very, very different. Um, I like to say that I feel comfortable when I vote on it, and it's good, not that it'll be perfect, it'll never be perfect, the one around the things we go about, oh, then think about that, but at least if we digest it, we'll make better decisions, more information makes better decisions. I believe we had a, our late Mr. Russell would say that, and, uh, and I totally concur in this case, just a lot to know. Um, the other thing I just wanted to share with you, um, is, uh, just a couple of things. I went down today and picked a, uh, there's two books that I just wanna share with you, a lot of you guys know this, but some of you may not, it's been in the paper, but I talk to people all the time that don't read the paper, didn't see it that day. Um, one is Images of America, and this is Lebanon, I believe it goes through sixty-nine...
Sixty-nine for the Quinn Pratt for our staff.
Uh, and so anyway, this is done by Miss, uh, Cam, Miss Kim Jackson, and all of the proceeds go to historic... I'm sorry, it's, but it's Kim Jackson Parks, that's her maiden name, but she goes to the historic, um, commission, and, um, the proceeds do, so if, if you guys enjoy history, and the older I get, the more I enjoy it, um, it's, it's on sale down at the chamber, and I'm sure you can get it some other way if you so chose to. Um, this particular book is, let's say, twenty-two dollars, twenty-one ninety-nine, like a great Christmas present for somebody. Um, the other thing is, I was unaware of this, but this was, uh, by Mr. Leckwich, and this is due from the hill, and this is about castle heights. And, uh, you can get this by mail, it's twenty-five dollars if you want it by mail, I've got a form if you want it, but it's twenty dollars if you go to the chamber, they just got them in, and that also would make an awesome Christmas present, if you've got some folks that have a whole lot of their heart in, in Lebanon, Wilson County. So I just wanted to bring those, I picked me up one of each today, um, can't wait till Christmas. Um, but I just wanted to share that with everybody, and I'll be happy to let you look at it or get a copy of this. Um, but anyway, the proceeds from Mr. Leckwich's book goes to the scholarship fund at Cumberland University. So both of these were written, a labor of love, by folks to give back to our community, one historic and one is actually for Cumberland to send folks to school. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I know that Rick, you probably enjoy that too, that's right up your alley there, Mr. Professor. Um, the, I guess the only other thing I would say is, I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving, I hope everybody has a safe and good holiday. Um, we do have a lot to work on, um, but you're not a growing community, you're always gonna have a lot to work on, if you don't, you know, you won't progress, and I certainly understand that, so, um, I thank everybody for bearing with us and, and, uh, just kinda being with us, and I hope everybody's watching this on TV, if they can't make it, if you're at Channel 198, correct, Mayor?
On ninety-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Comcast watching the podcast, my, my, thank your wife for doing all the commercials.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and you can still, you can still use them, it's mine, I'm saying. So there's two options now, but one of them, at least not to see hot-hall commercials in the middle of them. Honest sire, but, but, thank you.
Robert, I think you have something that you, that you've been in, remember?
It's the, uh, I will enter into the minutes, the document, uh, that we're closing today, one point eight million dollar loan to the water department, that'll be used for the building and the water projects, is the one that y'all approved, fought back through TML, and we will also then take, uh, some of the cash, uh, in the water fund and pay down or pay off the S, uh, State Reviving Fund loan. So that will be entered into the minutes, Jackie, I'll give that to you.
Uh, also, council, and, uh, I think they'll be putting them on the website, is our quarter, quarterly reports of our departments, just to kinda, uh, enable people to know what I'm getting accomplished in, in Lebanon, so, uh, I just wanted to make that announcement. Next, we have the consent agenda, but apparently it's not, maybe, might not be consent, so I'll read it out here. Ordinance twenty-six, this is second reading for the approval of the comprehensive update City of Lebanon zoning code.
Make a motion to re-defer, Sarah.
We have a first and a second to defer discussion. I would like that if you have any questions, I, I will be bringing this back, I'd like to get it put to bed, uh, in, for the end of this year, but if you have any questions, uh, get with Paul, let him go through it with you, and so that, um, you feel comfortable on this, and so that we can move forward on this. This is something that will, I think, uh, be very helpful in attracting businesses, and it's a better, an easily understanding of our codes compared to what we have now, and a lot of it's gonna make a lot more sense, so. Paul, do you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Kathy mentioned, yeah, we're gonna have a meeting that I set up with Kathy for next Monday at nine o'clock, um, if, I've also invited Bernie Ash, it's gonna be advertised, if anybody else wants to, to come to that, that's a good time to just, uh, any questions that you, you have, wanna look at, Matt, any questions?
So the public?
Yeah, and, and we're gonna move it down...
You don't need to be public, so if any of the other council wants, I will.
It'll be, it'll be public, we'll just move it down here and just, just have that time. Um, if you can make it, that's great, it's just to answer questions, another time to, to have kind of an informal talk with the staff.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a first and second.
Okay, we have a first and a second to defer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? For it to throw. Uh, this one, uh, I tell you what, Rick, would you kind of stand it? You know, uh, what we have here, this is Rick Bell. And, uh, we've had discussions of, uh, about our museum and, uh, our history of Lebanon and, uh, want to make sure that we pull a lot of that history and archives together so that, uh, people in the future will have a better understanding of where Lebanon was coming from in our history. And, uh, uh, so tonight in this resolution fourteen eighteen fifty-five, we're asking, uh, for the support to establish City of Lebanon's, uh, official historian. And, uh, this will be the first one and I'll be asking him to help me, uh, bring or revive the historical committee together, uh, and bring in new members that will have the same passion as Rick does to, uh, for history and especially for Lebanon's history and, uh, uh, you know, and I've gotta tell you a little bit here. Rick, uh, he graduated from Middle Tennessee State University and has a Master of Arts in Education for Cumberland University. Uh, he has an extensive background in researching and preserving history. Having spent, uh, many hours doing, uh, graduate research on mining camps in the West, American West, studying the people, their livelihoods, uh, their living conditions and their recreational activities. There, uh, but Mr. Bell has been a member of Cumberland University History Department since, uh, one. He's a graduate of Leadership Wilson and Mr. Bell is a member of the Lebanon Regional Planning Commission. And, uh, he placed priority on stating the involvement in City of Lebanon, Wilson County. He's a member of the Rotary Club, J C Ward Agriculture, Fellers Grove Committee. Uh, you know, their farm is, has a lot of history in it, in, uh, the Bell's farm there with the Horn Springs where the Horn Springs Resort is. Uh, I had the privilege of going through your home, Mr. Bell, and seeing all the pictures there from the Horn Springs and all that. It's just really awesome to see that kinda history and all. Uh, is, is developer here in Hamilton Springs and, uh, which is changing what our history's gonna be in Lebanon in the coming years, uh, with the train stop and what's happening out there. It, it's kind of a new era, so, uh, he's, he likes the past, but he's also one that wants to be in the future here. So, uh, before you, I have resolution fourteen eighteen fifty-five.
Will be approved.
And I have a motion and I have a second and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess, I guess you got a job now. It pays a lot and next year we'll double that. Would you like to say anything?
Uh, I also say, as a historian and a native of Lebanon, uh, I'm really honored to have this opportunity and I thank you guys for, for voting for me to, to do this. Um, I was in a meeting several years ago and a statement was made that Lebanon doesn't have any history. And my goal is to make sure nobody ever says that again. Uh, because we have all kinds of history, not just local history, but the history that, that we've had an effect on the state, but also the nation. So, uh, with the help of the History Committee and with Mayor, I think, will bring some of the history out.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, we will move on, ordinance fourteen forty-eight twelve, first reading to approve the lease purchase of nine police cars for the Lebanon Police Department, they have first and a second, and these are state contract.
Scourge it.
Yes.
Oh, chief, what's the cost of these cars?
Uh, I think they'll be, at least of the state contract was right at twenty-seven thousand pieces, they are on state contract.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Uh, ordinance fourteen forty-eight thirteen, first reading to approve an agreement with Reagan Smith Inc. Signing improvement of Christian Lane, some changeable road, first and a second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-eight fifteen, first reading to authorize purchase and replacement use of one-ton flatbed dump truck for the Public Works Department. At first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Resolution fourteen eighteen fifty-nine, to provide gas service for the Wilson County Veterans Plaza for the eternal flame.
Second.
At first and a second.
Discussion.
Uh, discussion.
Yeah, I think, seeing how this is the Wilson County Veterans Plaza, all of our municipalities need to be involved in funding this. Uh, I know two-hundred-and-fifty dollars isn't a whole lot of money every month, but we don't know the price of natural gas and how it's gonna go up, it could be, you know, that's a very open-ended thing right here. Uh, I, I don't know why we couldn't, uh, ask Mount Juliet, uh, and Watertown to help out on this seeing how this is a Wilson County, uh, Veterans, uh, Memorial and there are more, um, veterans, uh, in Wilson County than in, in just Lebanon. Uh, I just think it'd be a, a more fair way of doing it, I mean, I'm, I support it a hundred percent. Very impressive, uh, monument facility that's gonna be down there, but I just think we all need to be involved a little bit in, in paying it because, you know, ten years down the road, I don't know what, uh, natural gas prices are gonna be.
Uh, Dick, uh, we did some, uh, investigation into it, uh, we've talked to, uh, Bernie. We've got the time schedules that they are planning to run the flame, I think, uh, from four till twelve, four in the afternoon till twelve, we've estimated that costs are probably about a hundred and seventy-five to two-hundred dollars a month. Uh, uh, you know, we are at the lowest rates for gas, uh, and, uh, you know, if someone else wanted to come in uh, and, and join it and all, I think that would be good. I mean, the, everyone knows that City of Lebanon and this council is very supportive of the plaza. I mean, we've already done that in the, uh, uh, abatement of, uh, building permit fees, uh, gas, helping them run that and all. We still have issue coming up, of course, uh, later when we get some numbers of, uh, realignment of, uh, red light and all. So, I mean, we're very, uh, open there, but, you know, if the gas, we're, right now we're paying five dollars. Uh, see if you, I think that's the way you say it, at one point we were thirteen or so. Uh, if the time changes and they decided that you wanna run it twenty-four, seven, uh, you know, I, I think, uh, I think all of us at some point would need to want to come in. If somebody wants to join us, I think we would love to, uh, of other cities and all, so.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll just, uh, insert, you know, this is a destination for people across the entire state uh, and loved ones that are outside of the state. And it's always been our, um, our vision that anything we can do to attract people and especially our veterans and ones that are no longer with us, they gave their lives for this country. Um, it's in the city, um, we are a provider of gas, other entities don't even sell gas. And the, the idea right now, technically, if you had a twenty-four-hour eternal flame, I know there's discussion about where it's going, but we would be looking at less than ten thousand dollars a year. Now, we spend money on a lot of things and we can talk about the things we donate to, but I will tell you, I would welcome anybody else who wants to come in and help us underwrite these costs. But at this point, I'm saying the city, you know, and its commitment to our own folks, but also hard force and die for our freedom is the least that we can do. And, uh, as a person that believes that, I just think it's something we ought to.
Everyone here is, kinda, I, well, we're totally supportive of it, just that.
And I know that, I'm just saying we would love help, but, you know, if we don't have it, we don't have it and.
And, and it's, my, you know, at this, but just, just want info and, uh, those costs, but, uh.
As long as we're able to come back at some point and, you know, rethink the thing. It, it seems like, uh, the fuel prices are going up and up and, you know, we do need to share this cost, which I feel like we do anyway, because it is a Wilson County Veterans Memorial Plaza. Uh, then we can do that then, you know, uh, but we, we, we can't just have an open-ended, we're gonna pay for the gas from here until eternity, you know, that's, that wouldn't be smart at all.
Right here, this is a resolution, we will have to come back with, uh, that will have commitment of dollars for that. I just, uh, you know, I sent them some information out there to let you know that this is a, just say that we're ready to and support the Veterans Park, uh, in this way, uh, but also we'll be having an ordinance that we will, uh, commit so much money in every budget year that goes for that and, uh, that'll probably be on the next, the first reading for it on the next reading. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we're going to. All right, uh, we, we're gonna have a legal, legal meeting of minds, but to, to Joe, if you will, vice versa.
A turn.